I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Recording in progress.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, next order of business is the oath of office for Greg Anderson. We have Amanda on.
She...
Yes, you're on.
Oh, yeah, she's here now.
Okay. She's the new...
All right.
...for tonight.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Please, Mr. Anderson, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Greg Anderson...
Aye, Greg Anderson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the state of Minnesota...
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member...
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
Of the city of Grant...
Of the city of Grant.
In the county of Washington and state of Minnesota...
In the county of Washington and the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judg- and ability.
Thank you.
All right, welcome back to the council. Welcome. All right, next agenda, approval of regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rudd?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Next is approval of the consent agenda. Should have had a chance to look at that, and as a note, the consideration of the previous meeting's minutes has been moved as a separate item to new business. Due to Greg being new, he cannot, he has to abstain from approving the minutes from the last meeting, so that's what's moved to new business. And then, the resolution for the amended CUP for two silos, we're just formalizing that decision by adopting the resolution as part of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rudd?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Next staff agenda items, city engineer Brad Reesbeck has no action items. City planner Jennifer Swanson, Jennifer's with us tonight. Jennifer, could you start us out by walking us through the minor subdivision request for 11225 Julian Avenue North?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So before you, this evening is a request for a minor subdivision or a lot split. I do have a short presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Can everyone hear? Okay.
It's a little fuzzy.
Yeah, can, can, can we get the Jennifer's volume turned up a little bit?
Yes.
She can go on. You can start, Jennifer.
Okay, just let me know if you can't hear me, and I'll try to speak up a little bit, too. So, the request this evening, the applicant and owners are Michelle and Christopher Bond. The site, the parcel, is approximately fifty-two acres. It is located at 11225 Julian Avenue North. It is in the rural residential ag land use designation and is zoned A1. We did notice a public hearing for this evening. So the request this evening is essentially to create three lots from one. It's, it's essentially creating two new lots that would not have structures which are parcel A and parcel C. There is an existing homestead or farmstead that is on the property that is located on what is proposed parcel B. That proposed parcel B is the smallest parcel in the configuration. That's approximately six acres. And there's no development proposed at this time on parcel A or parcel C. Obviously, both of those created lots exceed the minimum lot size standard and then also meet our density requirements. So, as it stands, parcel A is just over ten acres, parcel C is just about thirty-six point two-four acres. All created lots comply with our minimum dimensional standards. As I stated, there's no structures proposed at this time. We do see this every once in a while. We've seen it in some of our larger plots, but also in some of these minor subdivisions. Because there's no structures proposed at this time on parcel A and parcel C, we really can't verify setbacks, et cetera, which is why you will see in your conditions of approval tonight that basically all future development of those parcels is subject to the ordinances in place at the time that that application is made. On parcel B, you will notice in the staff report and then also within the conditions that by creating the smaller parcel from this larger fifty-plus acre parcel, it does result in those existing accessory buildings and sheds to become non-conforming from the standpoint of it exceeds the maximum combined square footage and also the number of buildings. This has happened in the past, and typically the way we have dealt with it is said that they need to submit a demolition plan that shows what, what of those accessory buildings are going to be removed to make sure that we comply with the, the maximum combined square footage and number once it is actually subdivided. So, we have done this in the past. It's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky just to make sure that from a timing perspective, we get that commitment of what is going to be removed to become compliant. But essentially, they cannot record the subdivision until we have a plan for how that is going to be achieved. As it stands, there are two larger accessory buildings and several smaller, so it will be up to them to figure out exactly what combination of removal they would like to do to become compliant with that standard. We have included a condition within your resolution this evening addressing this item. The way that we have also identified or ensure that this occurs is if something were to not be removed prior to the plat or the subdivision being recorded, the deeds being recorded, we have also taken a letter of credit in the past to ensure that that removal does occur. In terms of the access, you will note that there is an area of shared access point between parcel A and parcel B. We do allow shared access, but we do not allow shared driveways. So at the time that parcel A were to develop, that driveway would need to split after that area where that shared access point extends from the right-of-way. In terms of the lots, in the past, when we've looked at some of these larger created lots, both parcels that are created, that are undeveloped, exceed ten acres. Both of them have at least an acre of upland area, and actually in both cases have well above the one acre. And so from that standpoint, we want to make sure that there is a condition that septic permits must be pulled at the time that any development is occurring or proposed on those two lots. But because they exceed that ten-acre parcel, we have in the past allowed that to be a condition of the lot split. The city engineer did not have any comments to pass forward. There are other agencies that are involved in this, but they really come into play after the subdivision is approved. So, for example, we need to file, they need to file the subdivision and also the associated deeds that describe the new lot configuration, and then also ensure that all future development is subject to all standards that are in place at the time of proposed development. So, as I stated, there are a handful of conditions that are provided in your draft resolution this evening. Essentially, the big one is making sure that that demolition plan is submitted so that parcel B is brought into conformance with the lot standard now that it would be a six-acre lot. And so, timeline for what that demolition looks like would have to be submitted and approved, and we would need to make sure that we have that information prior to any deeds being recorded, unless we were to receive a letter of credit. The future development, as I noted, would be subject to all standards and regulations in place at the time of development. Since we don't know when parcel A or parcel C or if they were to be developed, we would make sure that the condition is clear that they are subject to those standards that are in place at the time. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the requested minor subdivision with the conditions as noted, and we have prepared a draft resolution for your consideration this evening. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will pass it back to you.
Does the council have any questions for Jennifer now, or would you like to hold those until after the public hearing?
I'll hold.
Okay. So before I call for a motion to start the public hearing, just a quick reminder of the purpose of public hearing. It's so that members of the public can express their opinions, but the council does not answer questions or deliver a discussed matters during the public hearing. So there's no back and forth. It's just we listen. So, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second?
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rudd?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
So, anyone who'd like to speak, please remember to sign in with your name and address so the clerk can properly record the minutes. And, anyone? Nope. One once, going twice?
Nope.
This is for the subdivision. Okay. All right, can I ask for a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close. I'll second.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rudd?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Okay, so who would like to start the discussion? I can, if no one else would like to jump in. I mean, this one seems pretty straightforward. It doesn't violate the five-acre minimum, ten-acre density, and I agree with Jennifer's conditions. There's one thing, Jennifer, I want to point out. In your analysis, you had mentioned including a condition that recognizes no determination has been made regarding the buildability of parcel A or C, and that a septic permit must be obtained from Washington County prior to issuance of any building permits for that parcel. That's pretty standard language they have, but it wasn't in the condition on the resolution. Yeah, can you just...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for reminding me of that. Yes, that was obviously not an intentional omission, and that should be included. So, if you were to make a motion for approval this evening, just make it with the amendment that that be added. So my apologies that it was missed in the resolution.
I apologize. I didn't, I caught this like an hour before myself, so I would have mentioned it to you earlier. Okay, so, any other... Okay, it looks like we have ready for a motion.
So, I do have one question. So, on B, you said that it could be greater than twenty-five hundred square feet, and that includes the outbuildings, or are those additional? Is it twenty-five hundred square feet on the six-acre parcel, period, across three buildings?
Correct.
Okay, so if you had a main house of fifteen hundred feet, then you could add another thousand feet on two other buildings, and that would be the end of it. Okay, I think I understand.
On the accessory buildings, correct.
Yeah.
It's a total of twenty-five hundred square feet or three. So maximum square footage, they could have, you know, one building that's twenty-five hundred square feet, or they could have three buildings spread across that twenty-five hundred square feet.
All right, and none of the buildings that are, I mean, where they're, where they're living now, it's much bigger than twenty-five hundred square feet, I believe.
So the house is not included. It's the accessory buildings.
Right, right, okay. But if the house is bigger than twenty-five hundred square feet now, what do you do?
That's fine, because it's the house. The principal structure is not subject to the twenty-five hundred square feet or three maximum.
Okay, even if it was a barn?
Is the barn being lived in today?
That's up to the building inspector and you, I think.
Well, that is a separate question that has not been brought up. I don't, the principal structure is excluded. So if the principal structure is a home and that they're living in, that is excluded, and then there are twenty-five hundred square feet of accessory building, that's permitted.
Okay, but if the building that they're living in has never been used or been inspected as a primary home, what do you do?
So, that would be, I think, up to the building inspector in terms of whether or not it is in fact being lived in, and if it qualifies and meets the conditions of a principal structure.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, someone can make a motion.
No questions here.
No other questions? Nope.
I'll move to approve resolution 2025-07, but to add in that there is the additional requirement for getting approval for septic and...
No determination regarding the buildable.
That's right, and no determination that these parcels are buildable.
Thank you, Anderson. I'll second that.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rudd?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefer?
Aye.
Next item for Jennifer, could you please walk us through the variance request for 89th Street North?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Once again, I have a short presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Right, so, the request before you this evening is a variance from dimensional standards for an existing lot. We will look at the configuration in just a moment. The applicant this evening is Daniel Hulka. The owner, owners are Bertha and James Filipowski. The property, the lot, is approximately one point one acres. The location is an unaddressed parcel at the curve of 89th Street North. It is guided rural residential agriculture, and it is in A2 zoning district. There is a public hearing that has been scheduled for this evening. So, the applicant is requesting a variance from the following dimensional standards. The first being the minimum lot size. Obviously, our current standard is five acres. The minimum buildable area, this has just shy of one acre of buildable area available on the lot. The minimum lot width, it does not meet that standard. And then also the density requirement for the area. The applicant, as I understand it, has a purchase agreement from the subject property, for the property from the current owners. The applicant, for those of you that were on the council prior in 2024, did submit a land use application inquiry looking for some background information regarding the subject lot, since it is well below our required standards. During that 2024 review process, we did look into the information available through Record Ease, which is the Washington County Recorder's Office that provides information back to the early 1980s. When we did that review, there were no deeds or property transfers dating from the current time back through the 1980s where that online information was recorded. So based on that, the applicant was informed that there was no information with respect to how this lot was created and whether or not there were any property transfers of ownership over the last, you know, forty-plus years. The existing site conditions are such that we've got approximately one point one acres. The site is currently vacant. It has never been developed or improved to, at least from the records we have. There are no wetlands on the site based on the National Wetland Inventory and other information available. The site, for reference, has been taxed at a rate that suggests it is not buildable. That tax rate has been approximately seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. That was based on the 2024 tax for the property. Of course, the question this evening is whether or not the subject lot can be built upon. So, some other information that exists is that there is a recorded easement between this particular parcel and the parcel to the east for the driveway. You can see that actually on the graphic just to the right, where the existing driveway extends. The applicant has submitted a record of when the first deed was available for the subject property. It was in 1971, and that deed shows that the one point one acres was created, or not created, but it existed for transfer in 1971 from Mabel and Glenn Tubbs to Bertha and James Filipowski, which are the current owners. The deed also notes that that transfer occurred for a dollar. So with respect to what they're proposing today for the variance, dimensional standards-wise, we're looking at a minimum lot area of approximately one point one acres is what's proposed. Our ordinance requires five acres. Minimum lot depth is, is met and complies with our ordinance. Minimum lot width, the proposed is a hundred and thirty-five feet. The variance is approximately a hundred and sixty-five feet. Likewise, with that frontage on the improved road. The setbacks, you can see from the graphic just to the right that the yellow is essentially the setback area. They've got a proposed house sited on the lot. You can tell from this proposed location that it would comply with those required setbacks. In terms of the buildable area, as I stated, the buildable area is just shy of the minimum, which is one acre or forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. It's coming in around thirty-nine thousand square feet. Just a note that this was inaccurately reflected in your staff report, and so staff is correcting that this evening for your reference. Another point, which has to do with dimensional standards, obviously, the one-acre buildable area is typically associated with ensuring that there's enough area for both the principal structure and then also the corresponding septic primary and secondary drain field that's required to serve the property. You can see in this red rectangle that this is the area identified as septic field location. I would just note that typically we see a primary and a secondary drain field identified by the septic designers. That is not the case here. And we did not receive the septic report or test for this particular drain field area. And so, within the applicant's narrative, they state that Washington County has reviewed it, but we were not provided with any correspondence demonstrating that they had approved this location or that the septic tests complied. In terms of our existing standards with respect to undersized lots, section 32-246B establishes exceptions to some of those minimum dimensional standards. It essentially states that we determine whether the lot is an existing lot as the definition. You can see from this definition that the lot does comply with the existing lot definition. That moves us to number two. It says that if you sort of pass that threshold as an existing lot, what are some of the exemptions that we've provided? You can see by these standards that we essentially have said that if it was created, it's an existing lot, and it's at least two point five acres. It can then qualify for certain exemptions. In this case, obviously, we're well below that two point five acres. So then we move to number three, which is undersized lots. This states that in a group of two or more contiguous lots, that the parcel, if the adjacent parcels are controlled by the same entities, that you must combine them with that adjacent parcel. In this case, it does not meet the exemptions provided in number two, and the condition provided in number three cannot be met because the adjacent property owners are not the same entity as the applicant or the owner. So as a result, it does not qualify for those exemptions, and so therefore, the variances were required to be requested. In terms of our variance review criteria, our ordinance lays out a few conditions that we have to review. So the first is that is the proposed use of the property, the proposed use cannot be established under the current conditions allowed by the ordinance. So, from that standpoint, they could not develop it with the single-family residential uses. Number two, the plight of the landowner must be due to unique physical conditions of the land and are not applicable to other lands in the same zoning district. And the unique conditions of the site cannot be caused or accepted by the landowner. So briefly, in terms of what is provided in your staff report for analysis, based on the existing conditions and configuration, we could not consider this buildable under the definition of the ordinance. As a result, it is zoned and guided for rural residential uses, so it's reasonable to consider this for development with single-family uses, and that would not be permitted under the strict interpretation of the ordinance as it's written. The deed for the subject property was recorded by the county in seventy-one, prior to the adoption of the current ordinance. This becomes a bit nuanced just to establish whether it's an existing lot of record, how it was created, or when it was created. So by way of background, regulations in the 60s did permit lot sizes that were less than our current five-acre minimum standard. However, in 1968, Washington County's zoning ordinance did require a two point two-five acre minimum per lot. That was established primarily or very much in correlation with ensuring that there was appropriate area for a primary and a secondary drain field. And so at that time, when these ordinances were going to put in place, we had substandard lots with septic systems that were not functioning properly, and there was no area for a secondary drain field. That was the impetus, or one of the impetus, for creating the minimum lot size. And so, if you'll recall, we saw that the deed was created in 1971, or not created, but there's a 1971 deed that shows the property transfer to the Filipowskis. It's unclear when the lot was recreated, was created, if it was created in seventy-one or if it was created prior to that. You may have noticed within your packets that there was a picture of half of the abstract from the property, but it was unclear from that picture what, what had occurred and whether or not there was a subdivision or how, how that information relates to then what was memorialized in the deed. Finally, the rural residential agricultural land use designation establishes that the density is four dwelling units per every forty acres. If this lot were to be developed, it would increase the density to approximately eight dwelling units per forty acres based on what's happening in the section. So as a, as a result, obviously, it would not comply with that density standard. Number two, the plight of the landowner must be due to unique physical conditions of the land and are not applicable to other lands in the same zoning district. As part of actually the 2024 application process, land use review process, we did a GIS analysis, and we identified approximately six unplanted parcels in the city that do not meet minimum lot size requirements or the exception requirements that are not currently in a group of two or more contiguous lots or parcels owned by the same owner or, or entity. So that results in approximately less than point two percent of all parcels within the city that are similarly situated. There are no other vacant parcels in the area that are less than the five acres or the lot exemption that are independently owned. So you may have noticed, if you were out taking a look on GIS, that there are a couple other smaller parcels that are also along, along 89th Avenue that have been combined with the adjacent parcel to at least meet that two point two-five or the two point five acre minimum. Since the adoption of the current ordinance, landowners with similarly sized standards lots have combined their parcels to meet the minimum acreage. I can think of at least three or four over the past, you know, ten years or so that, that I've worked on applications similar to this where that combination has occurred to get to at least the minimum two point five acre exemption criteria that's established. At this time, neither the current owners of the subject property or the applicant have common ownership, so that would require them to purchase area from an adjacent parcel. The unique conditions of the site cannot be caused or accepted by the owner. It's unclear if the lot was actually created prior to the 68 ordinance or whether or not the 1971 deed is actually when it was created. If the lot was created after 1968, it would have likely had to have been created for either purposes other than single-family residential uses or by a variance for the minimum lot size standard. Obviously, it's unclear if it was prior to 68 or if it was after, but we do know that that deed was from 1971. We don't know what it was created for. I have seen examples within the city where there are some of these geographically described areas that were not for single-family purposes but for other purposes, agricultural purposes in the past. So, we're not sure exactly why this parcel was created, and we don't have any information in terms of was a variance granted if it was in 1971, et cetera. So it's not, it's not actually possible to determine whether the owners created the situation or not because the Filipowskis, from what I can tell based on the records, were the owners in seventy-one and continue to be the owners. So, additional criteria includes the essential character of the neighborhood or locale. Obviously, the rural residential use that's proposed is consistent with the existing character of the neighborhood. However, the lot size is certainly smaller than other parcels within the area. There are some that are in that two point five, two point two-five range that are along 89th, but none are as small as the one acre that is being discussed. but none are as small as the one acre that is being discussed this evening. Economic considerations alone cannot be justification for the variance. Obviously, it's reasonable for them to want to utilize their property. However, this is clearly due to economic considerations because they're trying to develop and build on the subject parcel. I will note that if it's determined that other variant, the other variance criteria are met, that would obviously demonstrate that economic conditions alone are not the only basis for determining the variance or approving the variance. So in terms of engineering standards, there's nothing really at this time to review because we have a concept plan. Obviously, if there, if this were to be deemed buildable and construction plans were put together, obviously, the grading plan and all of that information would be reviewed by the city engineer. In terms of other agency review, apparently, based on the applicant's narrative, the Watershed District has indicated that they do not require any sort of permit for the proposed construction of the home. They also have indicated that Washington County reviewed the septic design and approved it with no objections. No documentation was provided to evidence that that county approval was provided. We did not receive the septic tests. And given the way that the septic area is denoted, we don't know whether the primary and secondary drain field was intended to be located in that particular area. So this evening, staff is requesting that you discuss the proposed variances. You have three options this evening. Deny the requested variance with findings. Direct staff to come back with a resolution at your next meeting. You could approve the requested variances with findings and conditions. And once again, direct staff to prepare a resolution for your next meeting. And third, you could table the application if there is additional information from the applicant that you think would be helpful to assist in making your determination this evening. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Wait for after the public hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the applicants, a representative is here for the applicant. If you would like to hear from him or have any questions for him.
So we do that outside the public hearing? Or can we do it after?
You can do it after, you can do it before, you can do it whenever you want. I just want to let you know.
Do it after. Because then the, you might want to respond to some of the public comments. Okay, that being said, I'd like to have someone call motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Gieford?
Public hearing is now open. Anyone who'd like to speak? Again, please remember to sign in with your name and address. Yep, go ahead, Dave. You can announce your name and address and write it on the slip so it can be properly recorded for the minutes.
My name is Dave Hadeen. We, Barb and I live at eighty-two twenty-three Eightieth Ninth Street North. Our property is directly south of the lot that you're considering. And we moved out there in nineteen seventy-three, bought five acres, built a house, raised a family, been there ever since. We love Grant. But we are asking that you do not approve this variance. For one thing, we think it's a very small lot. I think the, actually, in the engineering part, I think they're saying that it's about twenty-four thousand square feet for a buildable site because there are two roads and one driveway access going through this property. And part of it is somewhat landlocked to the south because of the road. So it's a very small lot. And we also think that this is going to have a very strong negative effect on our neighborhood. For one thing, if this structure is built, it's going to be closer to three residences than any of the residences are to each other currently. Does that make sense? I mean, it's going to be closer to three homes than any residences currently are to each other. So it's really being forced into, I think, a tight area. And like, for instance, Barb and I will be looking out our front window right at this structure. We have a neighbor to the east whose driveway is going to be going like feet away from the structure as they go back to their place. And another neighbor who's going to be thirty yards away from the structure. So we feel it's really being pushed into a tight area. It's going to definitely increase the density and the congested feel in that area. So we also think that this is going to dramatically affect our property values having structure in a house so close to all these places. So that's kind of where we stand on the neighborhood. I also think it's maybe the wrong way for Grant to go with, by approving this variance. It seems like you might be setting a precedent where it's going to make it easier for small properties to be developed in the future. And I'm concerned if we get a trend like that going that we would get the attraction of the Met Council. And I don't know if something like this could happen, but it certainly happened in Lake Elmo where they decided that they could no longer be rural, had to put in sewer and water. And I don't think we, any of us want that to happen to Grant. So because of the negative effect on our neighborhood and the possible future effects on the city of Grant, we're asking that you do not approve this variance. Thank you.
Hey, could you sign in? Could you sign in there?
Dave, did you sign in the sheet?
Okay.
So she can get you on the minutes.
Thank you.
And do we have someone else that wishes to speak? Just let him finish that, and we'll have you do the same thing.
Well, there's signing in, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I did receive some comments for the public hearing. Nancy Erickson at eighty-one forty-three Eightieth Ninth Street. She said she is opposed to the variances being requested. Basically, that's what she said. I had another email from Dave and Barb Hadeen at eighty-two twenty-three Eightieth Ninth Street. Oh, okay. We got it covered then.
And then is there anyone online?
Hi, my name is Steve Mampel. I was the first one to move out there on that property. It was a Sunday afternoon, and my wife and I were driving around, and there was a two-track going across the field. And so we drove back, and Glenn Tubbs came out and was kind of irritated that we were driving around back there and said he didn't want any hanky-panky going on and all this. But we'd just been married, and we were looking for a piece of property out in the country. We were, I'm a farm boy, and so was she. And so anyway, we had a real good talk with Glenn that afternoon. We got to be pretty good friends, and that was on a Saturday. Sunday morning, he called me, and he said, yeah, I'll sell you. Somebody got to take five acres. And I didn't know we had to have five acres out here. I lived in White Bear, and I never got out here. So anyway, he said, you need five acres. And I said, well, what, you know, we worked out a price, and that was, I had to pay an F for two and a half years before I could get a loan to build a house. Anyhow, what happened is Glenn said that he was going to sell off the rest of the property and everything. And I said, gee, I said, I really don't want to put a road in here into my house. I want it to be closed up so people don't see me, and I'm in my own little area. And he said, I'll tell you what, I'll put a [bleep] in there. Put the road in, he said, I'll build it up to where it is, and I'll give you an easement on that. And I said, great, that'll work. Then about three or four years later, the rest of these people all moved in, and every one of them has been there fifty years or longer. You know, we spend a lot of money. We spend a lot of time fighting power lines and all this to keep it rural, to keep it where it's supposed to be. And there's a few of them there, the Johnsons and myself, and a few of us that hunt there, and we have our five acres we can hunt on. And we, you know, everything works out good. We haven't had any problems in all the years. Then I would find out that Glenn had either sold or given away this little piece of land. So Mr. Johnson, Tom's dad, I mean, the kid's dad's there. He and I got together, and I went up to see Glenn and said, we'd like to buy that little piece of land. Glenn said, oh, jeez, I already sold it or gave it to a relative or something. I'm not sure just what it was. And I said, well, how, why would he buy that? He can't build a house on it. I said, it's, you know, not up to snuff. It's only less than an acre. And he said, well, that's what it was in it. And then he said they didn't really want to sell it to people that had it. I said, okay, well, listen. I looked back, and I think evidently the town board or something made a mistake when they looked at his plan for the land or something. And they knew that little acre was on there. Why they let him get by with it at that time, I don't know. Personally, I hope right now you don't make, they don't make that same mistake again. And there should be no reason for that house there. And I don't want them there, and none of us do. I know it's not nice of us and everything to say that, but we had to buy five acres, he should have to buy five acres too. And I don't want to set a precedent. You know, if James wants to start selling land or Gunderson's wants to start selling land there, they'll say, jeez, let's let a little acre on the side here land. Whether he got it, he got away with it, we'll get away with it.
All right, well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I've been a little bit remiss in not mentioning it. If you could try to hold your comments for three minutes. No, we go a little bit long. That's fine. I didn't, I would rather let people go a little bit long than worry about time. So I'm just throwing that, so no pressure, but.
Sure, no worries. David Johnson, eight-one-nine-six, Eightieth Ninth Street North. So on behalf of my mother, Kathleen, who's the property owner, and I'm the current resident and future owner, and my brother, Tom. My, I grew up on this property that is adjacent to this property in question, and so did my whole family. And we've been there most of our adult lives. We've seen it not change once in that time. And really, the whole purpose of Grant is to keep it rural, right? That's been a continuing theme. I think, much like my neighbors have said better than I can, I would urge you to deny this request for variance. I think it does open up possibility for other properties of this nature to be developed. And also, it really sets a bad precedent for the future of Grant, and I don't want to see that happen. Also, it is, like was mentioned, about thirty yards from me, and I certainly don't want to see a structure that close when all the other neighbors are quite a bit farther away. It will fundamentally, if it were to pass, it will fundamentally change the nature of the neighborhood and the density and affect our property values, so with that.
Did you get signed in?
I will, I will, thank you.
While he's doing that, is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Jerry Helander, sixty-two sixty-one Jasmine Avenue North. No, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I've been around here for a while and seen things happen. Up until nineteen sixty-eight, you could have a one-acre lot. I live in a neighborhood that's full of those. And then it turned out that if you had a one acre that was plotted before nineteen sixty-eight, in subsequent years, you could still build on it because it had been platted. That was really the question. In fact, a one-acre lot that's one block away from me right now was built on two years ago. And at the time, I don't think the council was aware of it because the property owner went and applied for a building permit. And the building inspector, as I understand it, consulted with some legal authorities that said, yes, because it was platted back in the sixties, and it satisfied the sewer requirements, it could be built on because those are the rules. I think the applicant is going to have a longer story, and I would just like to comment that I hope in the future you have the applicant make his presentation before you have the hearing. I think that would be a better order of doing the business. But moving on with this, I understand neighbors not liking change. I guess none of us do. We get our little place, and we can look at woods, and we have our view. But the real question is, was that property platted before nineteen sixty-eight? That's the question. And as I understand, maybe that hasn't been resolved yet. And if it hasn't, then I would say you can't proceed to build on it. But if you can find proof that it was platted, then I think that property owner has a perfect right to build on it as long as they satisfy the septic requirements like everybody else has to do. There's a long history of houses being built after various Met Council decisions were made. There were a lot of houses built on one-acre lots after nineteen sixty-eight. There were a lot of houses built on two-and-a-half-acre properties after the five-acre rule was brought in. But the rule applied to new developments, what you could develop. The question is, when was that one acre platted? And that's really what it boils down to. Thank you.
The representative, do you want to close the public hearing?
Is it?
I'm the applicant, so you can close it.
So Amanda, is it typical to close the public hearing before the representative of the applicant speaks?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, so we can do that. We can close the hearing.
Make sure there, and is there anybody that is on Zoom that would like to speak?
There's also the owners that might be on Zoom. So I don't know if they would speak now or after.
No, it's during the public hearing where people speak.
Okay. Anyone Zoom?
Jennifer, it looks like James has his hand up.
Sorry, Mr. Filipowski, it looks like, is with us, so I'm going to bring him in. So James, it looks like you, if you unmute yourself, you would be able to address the council.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know this property was plotted prior to January, or July eighteenth, nineteen sixty-six. It was sold in July eighteen, nineteen sixty-six, and recorded August fifth, nineteen sixty-six in book two ninety-one of the deeds, page two twenty-six. So I got that off the abstract for the property. So if you look it up, it was plotted prior to nineteen sixty-six. And I think it's buildable because it's grandfathered in.
Any other comments, Mr. Filipowski?
Oh, that would be all.
And anyone else on Zoom? I think that was it.
Is there anyone else dialed in that would like to speak during the public hearing? Raise your hand. There is not.
And we can close public hearing and then have Mr. Hello.
The representative, sure.
Entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Cornet?
Aye.
Councilmember Rock?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumona?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Gieford?
Aye.
Mr. Hello, would you like to address the council?
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is a representative for the applicant.
Represent?
I am the applicant.
Oh, you are the applicant. Oh, you told me you were representative of the applicant.
Probably representative.
Maybe miscommunication. Yeah, Daniel Hello, the applicant for the property. So I know there's a question on if there was two drainage approved, two drainage sites approved for the property. And there was, I have a copy of a document here that I printed on.
Clerk, is this, is this a proper procedure? Shouldn't all the information be in the packet before the meeting?
Mayor and councilmembers, the applicant, and I spoke about that earlier. And yes, it should have been submitted with the application. Should have been in the packet. I, he did email it to me and it has been forwarded to the planner. But clearly, the information he's passing out was not part of the review or the planner's report. So I don't know what he's passing out.
So this is one of the things that I emailed you about?
Yes, which nobody's reviewed yet.
Yep, sure.
This is a little bit of unusual circumstance.
Please proceed, please proceed briefly. Go ahead.
Okay. So this just shows the design, the two-septic field or not? So there's not, there's not a design efficiency at all? Just to guess from the review? It was approved by the county of Washington. So if there's any questions on that, that's remedied from there. I also would like to say, there are one-acre lots in the area. I mean, down at the street where it turns into Ideal Avenue, there's a one-point, there's a one-acre lot where the house is built in nineteen sixty-four. So I think, and then there's one across the street, that's one point two acres. I think this is, this one point one acre lot is certainly well within the, kind of the form of the neighborhood. Fits in well. As the seller was saying, there's a recording on the abstract of a sale in the year of nineteen sixty-six. So I think our contention is, you know, this is a grandfathered lot, has statutory protections for development. I think that's pretty clear at this point. And I don't know of any other items that would, that you guys would need. So if there's any questions at this point, I'd be willing to answer them. I actually, I did reach out. I know there was some question about the Met Council and their thoughts on these smaller lots. I did reach out to them and asked them about grandfathered lots. They don't care that these are developed. These are developed in many jurisdictions throughout, you know, Washington County and around the metro area. So if there's, I have an email and a copy of it that I passed to you. And I can share it with you guys now if you guys want that. But otherwise, any questions otherwise?
Any questions? I have no questions.
No, no questions. Yep.
All right, so. End of the public council discussion. Do we have any questions for staff? Either Amanda or Jennifer? Or do not?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question. I just briefly looked at the email that was forwarded to me that has the attachments. And I do not see anything in the attachments about the septic approval or review from the county. Was that delivered to you? Just because I don't know exactly what he handed out. I'd like to know what it is. I see a site map that has two, what I presume are primary and secondary drain fields, but I don't have anything indicating Washington County's reviewed it or soil borings or anything. So I just want to make sure I understand what you received.
That is what they received. I can copy the, or send a copy of the septic design and approval of the lot.
That should have been provided.
In the packet, there's an email that corresponds between me and Jennifer. And at the bottom, there's a link where she was able to access the document, but for whatever reason.
But she's saying that she?
Yep, I understand.
Okay.
But I was not aware that she had not received it at all. I mean, I, the link is in the email that is in the packet. I assumed that she had it, so.
Did we lose Jennifer?
No.
Oh, Jennifer, in that email, did you see anything about the Met Council? You forwarded something from the Met Council as well? Did, I haven't seen that.
Mr. Mayor, I saw the email from Met Council. I also, I see the site plan. I'm just checking previous emails. He seems to suggest that it was sent prior. Is that correct, my understanding of that?
Yeah, in January. I mean, I can send another one right now that has the full septic design if you want.
So. So anything that was sent before?
I'm just checking my emails, Mr. Mayor. So if you just give me a moment.
Anything that was sent before the application, I think you would send again. I don't know if it's staff's responsibility to go back and determine on their own what you intend to be included in the variance request. So Jennifer can spend some time looking at that, but I think we, I've got some points I would like to share if no one else does. So regardless of these other comments, Mr. Hellicka, about the supposed Washington County approval of the septic, there's a couple of other points that stuck out to me in Jennifer's presentation. And I haven't seen any evidence provided that the lot was ever part of an approved plat or any document that was registered with Washington County that says that lot was deemed buildable. There's no variance from the nineteen sixty-eight standard of the two-point-two-five minimum acre lot size. So there's nothing for us to say if this lot was buildable. So that's one point. And then the second point, I don't see any evidence that the lot was independently owned of any adjacent parcels before nineteen eighty-two. Obviously, it's easy to say that now there's no current ownership of adjacent parcels, but we don't know if there is an opportunity to combine lots since that timeframe. And so that's point number two. And then kind of going back to the septic, I mean, this, if I'm to look at this, is, it looks like the primary and secondary are overlapping?
It's the overlap with the mound, the actual drain fields aren't overlapping.
Okay. But I guess this is beside the point for me. If I don't see anything from Washington County that says it's approved?
Yep. I just forwarded the email with the whole septic design and approval to Kim. And you can forward it on to Jennifer if you would like to. As far as the ownership, it's been owned since seventy-one by the current owners. So the ownership has been continued.
That does not address the question if there was any time from them till now that adjacent parcels could have been combined into that, a buildable lot?
Well, I think they've owned all the adjacent parcels since the seventies. So I don't think there's any opportunity to combine them. You guys have not owned? When did you guys buy?
So. Yes.
So.
All right, John, you had something to say?
No, I mean, when I, when I hear Jennifer's presentation, it seems, it seems as though she has dug in a lot about what is buildable and what is not. And, you know, when we look for things that we would like to know, we lean on our planner. And I would believe what our planner has put together for us this evening.
Any other comments? Greg, you been kind of quiet here?
I'm just kind of taking it. My question would be, I'm still not resolved in my mind, was this a lot before sixty-eight or not? I mean, Jennifer couldn't find that it was. Not. We heard tonight that maybe it was. The picture in the back, I don't think is conclusive to me. Yes, those are the dates that the owner recited, but I think we're missing some of the information on that deed. So in my mind, I'm not completely clear on what side of the fence. And with the septic information now coming in, I, I don't know if I'm clear on what the direction should be in my mind.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question?
Public comment, no, we can't go into back and forth here. All right. So would anybody like to make a motion and how to proceed with this? Have a kind of question first? Table and ask more? Can I have a question first, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. So just for our understanding, is this is more complicated than usual? You know, as, right now, as I read the, you know, the thing that was mentioned in the public comment by the current owner, that it could have been platted, but that's very unclear. And how do we rectify that or understand what's what in that situation? Because I don't think, as far as I understand it, the onus is not on you to clarify that. It's on the owner. So as I see it, like, nothing's been determined to actually say that this is something that is, was ever deemed buildable. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you know, we've heard some information this evening that is, well, it's, it's new information or additional information to help clarify maybe the history of the parcel and how it was or wasn't created. But we do not have the documentation that shows it. So likewise, the septic information, for whatever reason, was not submitted with this specific application, but it sounds like may, may exist. So what I would say is that we are certainly within the timeline that we could ask for that supplemental information to be provided and table it this evening so that we actually can review it. It's very difficult to try to review those documents on the fly and confirm how it fits with a timing perspective. And especially, you know, the excerpts from the abstract that were provided were very unclear in terms of how or when the parcel may have been created. So it sounds like that information may be valuable for us to understand. And it's just very difficult for myself or the attorney to make that determination reviewing it in, you know, fifteen, twenty seconds as we're up here. So hopefully that helps. I do believe that it sounds like there might be additional information that would be, you know, helpful in the analysis.
So looking at our ordinances, we have it, existing lots of record exemptions. And it indicates if this lot or parcel was created in accordance with the city, if the time lot was created that was at least two-point-five acres in size, there would be an exemption. So I'm trying to rectify the, if it was already a parcel at that time in nineteen sixty-eight, how would that impact our analysis? Because just looking at our city ordinances, we had already created this two-point-five acre exemption, I believe, in the, regardless of whether it was platted or not.
So the exemption would allow someone to proceed without any variances, provided they can meet the other dimensional standards. So if they met that exemption of two-and-a-half acres and can meet the other dimensional standards, they would not be required to come before you for any sort of variance.
So I guess my question is more, how does, how does the fact of it has been plotted before nineteen, what, sixty-eight or not, how would that impact our analysis? Is it still the same, it just goes through the variance process and we still?
It is still a variance from the standards, regardless of the size. And so, because it is below that exemption, you know, standard of the two-and-a-half acres. So as a result, it's just basis or findings associated with whether or not you approve or deny the variance requests that are before you. So obviously, when we do the variance analysis, we like to have as much and complete information as possible to create the findings associated with whether or not you approve or deny it. In this case, we, it sounds like we're missing some information that regardless of whether you recommend, or whether you approve or deny it, those findings may be, or those facts, excuse me, may be helpful to you making your findings one way or the other. If they do not, you certainly could be in a position to make a decision this evening.
Right. Because I mean, just looking at it, regardless if it was a plat or not before nineteen sixty-eight, I think that really kind of just goes into what the possible purpose of this lot might have been, right? When they created it, because.
And that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, yes.
Because like, looking at it right now, like you indicated, you know, they could have created, and like what we heard during public comment is that perhaps this plot, you know, regardless of when it was created, wasn't ever created to create a home. It was just created by this individual and he gave it away or sold it to this individual. He just simply did. And it sounded like there were discussions about building a house on it and it was something that sounded like was not their intention at that time.
Also, could I, I want to make one clarification. The lot has not been platted.
Oh, sorry.
Regardless of, because that's been mentioned a couple of times. The lot is described through meets and bounds, but it's not part of a platted subdivision. So it was created, we know that we've got this description, the meets and bounds description is there, but it has not been platted. So I only bring that up because we do have platted subdivisions where you have the, you know, typical lot block configuration. And that usually comes along with a development agreement that specifically defines which lots are buildable, et cetera. This lot does not have that condition. So just for the record, it's described through meets and bounds. It was likely some kind of simple lot split at the time, but it is not a platted lot. So just for the record.
And there's no other documentation to suggest that there was a variance created from the nineteen sixty-eight standard either?
Not, not that's been provided, no.
So to me, that's the crux of the situation here. I mean, the septic information, I mean, I don't know if that would change my mind from what we just talked about, the fact that there's no document to say that this house is ever deemed, this lot was ever deemed buildable. Wasn't platted, there's no variance.
So, question?
No, no. Can we have Amanda back on?
Jason, can you hear me?
Yes. Amanda, can you speak to what I just said in terms of making a decision? If, if there is no proof that this lot was ever buildable, does it even make sense to talk about septic permits?
So potentially, it would be advantageous to give the applicant the opportunity to put forth whatever they want to on the record so that council is making a decision based on a full and complete record. That said, that does not mean that the septic is going to change the ultimate decision that council makes because it really goes back to that practical difficulties test that you have to ask yourself, which is, you know, the, if the use of the property is reasonable, if, and it cannot be accomplished under the current code, which, it can't be accomplished under the current code. So is it reasonable for that property to be built as a single-family residence? The second thing is, is the need for this variance, is that due to something unique about the property? And then, you know, has the property owner caused that situation or have they not caused that situation? And then the third thing being really this essential character. So by approving this variance, does that change the, or alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And if you can't get through all three of those tests essentially, or pieces to the test, the septic system is sort of a moot point.
Okay, thank you for answering my question. Does that answer everyone else's questions? Ready for a motion? We got, go ahead, John.
I will move to deny.
Motion to deny. Do we have a second?
No second.
Sorry, point of order. So could we clarify the findings for, for that, that, the motion to deny? So, and what I would be looking for, what Jennifer would be looking for is simply to say, based on the findings in the staff report, if those are the findings. If you have different ones, certainly, please, by all means, lay those out on the record.
Based on the findings of the planner report, I move to deny.
Can you do a friendly amendment? As well as the information we received tonight of the documentation, as well as the information As well as the information we received tonight of the documentation, as well as the information we heard orally at public comment, as well as from the applicant and the owner, as well as the information we heard via Jennifer that she received in the email.
Okay.
Counsel member Cornet, the second of the motion you need to agree to, both of you need to agree with a friendly.
Agreed.
And then can I get clarification? It was the the findings in the staff report, as well as everything that was heard this evening?
Heard this evening.
Basically.
And received this evening.
Okay, all right, so, ready. Counsel member Cornet?
Aye.
Counsel member Rob?
Aye.
Counsel member Crumona?
Aye.
Counsel member Anderson?
Name.
Mayor Giefur?
Aye.
City Attorney, we don't have any items for our City Attorney. I don't believe so. Sharon, do we have anything for you?
Nope.
New business, consideration of February fourth, twenty twenty-five, city council meeting minutes. Counsel member Anderson will need to abstain. Can I get a motion to approve the February fourth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting minutes?
Move to approve.
No second.
Counsel member Cornet?
Aye.
Counsel member Rob?
Aye.
Counsel member Crumona?
Aye.
Counsel member Anderson?
Abstain.
Mayor Giefur?
Aye.
Next, a new business, consideration of twenty twenty-five appointment list revision. Last meeting, we agreed to add Jeff Schaefer to the twenty twenty-five appointment list. I make that motion specifically as fire marshal, excuse me. Can I get a second?
A second. Oh, is you're moving?
Counsel member Cornet?
Aye.
Counsel member Rob?
Aye.
Counsel member Crumona?
Aye.
Counsel member Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefur?
Aye.
I I will just note, Mayor and council members, the on, for the appointment list, it was kind of supposed to be part of the motion. The webmaster, Heligen, they've kind of reorganized, and it's pagecraft now. So I'd like to make that change, as long as we're making the additional change.
Okay, can can, do we need to do the redo the motion?
Sure, why not? Let's just do it.
All right, we'll just redo the motion.
Oh, no, no, just do another motion for pagecraft.
Oh.
Pagecraft, okay.
I'll make I'll make a motion to do what Kim just said for the webmaster.
Pagecraft.
Pagecraft.
I'll second.
Counsel member Cornet?
Aye.
Counsel member Rob?
Aye.
Counsel member Crumona?
Aye.
Counsel member Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefur?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration of community event. This agenda item was added at the request of council member Rob, subsequent to our last February meeting. I didn't see any new information in the packet from when council last talked about it last year. So before I turn it over to you, John, I'll just give a bit of a history of the topic for the new members and to refresh our current members. So in the July twenty twenty-four meeting, a motion was made to discuss a community event in the twenty twenty, August twenty twenty-four meeting with more information from John. And then in the August twenty twenty-four meeting, council member Carr moved to withdraw the consideration of a community event. And that was based on, I think you were telling Tom that you wouldn't have time to put together anything, and you were on vacation. So at that time, we we tabled for twenty twenty-four to revisit it. And I think that brings us to where we're here now. But one other thing, in the budget meeting we had on September third, the council agreed on a budget of eight thousand for a potential twenty twenty-five community event, with the understanding that we are not obligating ourselves to use any or all of it, but we just want to budget it for a potential future future use. So that being said, John, I'll turn it over to you. And you can you can share with the the council what you'd like to discuss and consider.
Thank you. So when we were discussing this last year, we were hoping to, we we had a tractor parade many years ago. It's been about five years now that we haven't had anything that wasn't sponsored by the city of Grant. And so when we think about things that, you know, the city really did a lot with in a big city turnout, and going through the gas house, which they have said that they would supply food and, you know, for for a reasonable price, and parking across the street as we used to for the tractors. And so in doing this, we were hoping to do a tractor parade as we used to. I don't know if anybody remembers these things, but they were sometimes big turnouts, and it was a nice thing to do. So that's what I'm proposing to do a little sooner this year, as opposed to last year when we were scrambling, but trying to get people to help out. And in 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 trying to think about what we could do differently, we were hoping to get something, maybe something that Amanda would craft that would say, you know, by registering through a website or something online where you could say, you know, if you want to be in the register for the tractor parade, click here, then you have this waiver.
Perhaps.
And then you get a, you register online. And so we have a count of people that will, citizens, Grant specifically, that would register, and then we have a very accurate count, as opposed to, I think, when we used to do it, you would, you know, go there at ten thirty, register, and then, you know, however many people were there, where people were there, and then it's a it's a crapshoot on food. So we're trying to do a little better job this year. And I don't know how many people would show up. I don't know if it's fifty, a hundred, or two hundred. I have no idea. So that's why we'd like to preregister people and and do it a little differently this year. So that's my, that's my proposal, I guess, or idea.
That does sound like a proposal. It does not sound like a plan.
Right, yeah, it's 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 not. I mean, I just kind of went, tried to figure out what we could do differently, and then the preregistration thing came up. Now, I don't know if, Kim, is that something that is reasonable to do?
To preregister?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Is that something that's a lot of work to do? Or is that something that's, you know, you just click a couple of things on the website by page master, it is now?
Oh, no, that we discussed prior to the meeting, there would be a notice on the front of the website that says, email John Rob, and here's a to register, and here's a waiver. But I guess, again, that wasn't kind of the detail that...
I didn't anticipate this agenda item to be a working session to formulate a plan.
Right. No, no, this will be outside of this. I'm just trying to get somebody to think about something different registering, and then, you know, should we do a parade like this again, going forward for twenty twenty-five?
I would like to start with there, like, I I think the sentiment of a community event is good, but I think we really need to think it out, because when I think of a community event, I feel it should be planned, organized, and executed by members of the community. To me, that's where you get the real value of people working together to bring your community together. That's for the for a good cause, right? That's, to me, a community event. What I don't think is a community event is writing a check and handing it to a business and say, here, do all this stuff for us. And so, and personally, any community event that I've ever experienced has been that the the local elected officials, the local volunteers, everyone working together. And if we were to try to jump into something that we did before, that something like the trap tractor parade, that started back in January, when they had a team of twelve to fifteen people on there. So there's a, there's a lot of work to even put together a plan, I think, before we could even find out a list of volunteers, who's going to do what, when they're going to do it. So I would like to see us do a proof of concept and start small, John, and maybe work up to a tractor parade, if that's what we want to go. I think there's a lot of things that we could do that we would be able to do with very little money and see how many people we get to to turn up. Like currently, right now, with our city cleanup day, we have a hard time getting elected officials to show up. In the past eight years, I think I I've been the only council member other than Bob Tufti and and...
Council member Schaefer?
And Mr. Schaefer, and then Mayor Huber. And so I think we need to walk before we can run. And so that's just my my thoughts here. And so, you know, John, you're welcome to, you know, put together a plan and present it, but right now, there's really not much for the council to decide on.
Oh, no, there isn't a decision tonight I'm looking for. I'm just saying that there is a, this is what we had talked about last year, but we didn't have the volunteers to help. And so obviously, that was our biggest problem. You can't, you can't run something, a community event, with four people, maybe six. And that's all we had, and that was, that's virtually impossible. So we would have to have, you know, the fifteen, twenty people to to help. It's just impossible to run any event.
And that's, and that's what I think you would need commitments from before you even share that plan with the council. That being said, you know, starting...
I'm going to jump in, Mr. Mayor and council members, and I do apologize. It was my understanding it was to take action tonight. That's what agenda items are. So I must have misunderstood you, council member Rob. I thought it was to be put on the agenda to make a decision. That's what I thought.
We we intended it just to kind of do a reset with all the new council members, just to gauge interest in the council and a community event, and what kind of community event the council might be interested in. Was that your intent?
The intent was to talk about a tractor parade, as we had talked last year.
A tractor parade specifically?
Specifically, yes. So if it's, if it's, unfortunately, for the events that we have, the the cleanup days, those Saturdays, I I am a trap coach, and we shoot Saturdays, so I am never going to be available for those events until after June. So that's why I propose in September.
So you indicated that we obviously need, I mean, I've talked to, you know, in the process of running for this position, talked about community events. It does seem like our community is very interested in having some event. I think there was this nostalgia of, in the past, we had this tractor parade, it was great, we'd love to do something again. Do you have any, right now, is there like a list of people who are interested in in doing this so that we could move ahead? Or, I mean, where are we at on the volunteer piece, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, about, this is kind of why I'm talking about it, so that we can get some volunteers from the city who have indicated that they want to do more for the city. And this is something that I think I would like to elicit some some people from the city to help out, whatever community event we do. If it is a tractor parade, great. If it's something else, that's fine, too. But...
I'll I'll be, if you have a plan before me, I'll be glad to review the plan and make a commitment to volunteer, but I can't volunteer to something I don't know anything about. But I do, as Lindsay said, I do like that the that the sentiment is out there. I I talked to quite a few people of my my campaign as well, roughly forty percent were people that, yes, I'm in favor of this. The rest were like, no, or they're agnostic. And then when I polled the people that were interested, the forty percent, if they're interested in in volunteering, not so many people were interested in volunteering. So I do think there's enough numbers out there that would participate, but it's, I think the challenge is getting to people to volunteer and put in the work, because talking with the people that sponsored the tractor parade in the past, and it sounds like, John, you want to emulate that, that was a significant amount of work. They had twelve to fourteen volunteers, basically, starting on in January, if I remember correctly. So that's why I'm suggesting, if if we can get some other ideas, perhaps, maybe to to start smaller, proof of concept, things like, some things I heard from talking to residents were a chili cook-off in the fall, outdoor games on the city lot right here, like bags or, you know, the cornhole bag or or things like that, maybe a a dump cake in the summer, you know? I mean, who wouldn't want to spend a couple of bucks to get the council member and mayor's wet, right? Farmer's market, you know, there's a lot of different things I think we could do, and even within the the parade concept, we could start small with that. We could maybe have a one-way parade that begins at City Hall and ends at the gas house, which I heard recently was a suggestion, or maybe a stationary parade slash car show, where logistically, it would be a lot easier to to implement with much fewer volunteers and give us something to build on. So just throwing some of the...
Mr. Mayor and council members, I will note that that is, I've heard that repeatedly, that residents would be interested in setting up a little farmer's market out here. And that wouldn't be city-sponsored, it would just be on city property. Pick a day, advertise it, people come up and set up their little tables and sell their honey or whatever it is else they're making, and, you know, start there. And again, that it wouldn't be city-sponsored, it wouldn't cost the city any money.
As you guys probably all know, I love that idea. That's something I've talked about a lot in my campaign, is doing something like that. And the only thing about like the current proposal or about the gas top is having it just limited to two hundred, using, you know, taxpayer funds. We'd want to find a way that we wouldn't limit who can attend. We'd want to make sure everyone's welcome to attend, and I'd love to have a situation where, you know, two hundred and one people want to come. So I think whatever we do, we want to make sure that it's conducive, that all of our residents are welcome to attend, because we're using their money, and they're, they should be able to enjoy that.
Good point.
And I'm really hopeful that more than two hundred people would want to come to this, just because it has been a while since our city's done anything, and I think the interest is out there, that people want to connect.
Yeah, agreed. Greg, do you have any, any thoughts to share on this?
Well, not too much new. I enjoyed the tractor parade every year it went by. I never went down to the gas house to the end of it. I always just enjoyed it going by both ways. I do miss that event thing, but I I kind of agree with the mayor that maybe something here, whatever it is, as as the start. I mean, I can't imagine the logistics to get something like that pulled off for that parade. So I definitely would be in support of something, and maybe we do start here.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm going to just throw in there as well that it has been brought up to me, maybe perhaps the fairness of throwing a bunch of dollars at at one business as opposed to having a golf tournament at Indian Hills. You do have other businesses here and...
Yeah, and and potentially, that money that we have budgeted, it was a significant amount of money. And if we were not to use that at all in portion for a community event this year, we could use it perhaps to maybe partner with the local community to put in some improvements in the ball field to make it more suitable for a variety of uses, which would be actually a sustainable thing that would go beyond just one year and provide benefit for futures. That's just another thing to think of. Ben, you've been quiet over, do you have anything to say?
No, it just sounds like, you know, we, depending on what, John, we can either table it for, you know, a later date with the plan, or, and I know that I came in at the end last where we got tabled a few times and that happened, but as it right stands right now, as we're talking about this, the thing that makes the most sense to me is just to table it, if you agree, John, and, you know, we can...
Yeah, that's fine.
So I...
So, okay, so table, so what does tabling mean? Let's just try to be clear on that, just so John has some 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 proper understanding of what the council's thinking and vice versa. So, John, what do you, what do you think for next steps?
Well, if I can, you know, we can get some residents that would like to volunteer, and I can get some more information as to, you know, what the gas house is and dates or whatever, then, you know, maybe we can move forward. But until I have a lot more information and volunteers, there's really nothing I can do.
Okay, so would you, so are you firm on the tractor parade, or like, would you be open to other things starting small, or you want to wait to see how many volunteers you can get before you?
You know, I I guess if if we hear from volunteers as to what event they would like to say or see, perhaps, perhaps if residents would like to 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 put something on the website or even, you know, email me or call me, you know, that's fine, too. Just just to see what you're interested in, you know, what what you're what you're thinking. You know, is it, is it a cornhole tournament? Is it a tractor parade? Is it something in between? So, you know, if you want to call me or email me, that would be great. Or Kim, obviously. Maybe Kim is the best conduit. No? Okay.
Mayor and council members, then, I would suggest you table this for now to get, obtain more information. And then I would announce to residents that you would like them to email John, city email, and ask them what they would like to see for a community event, and if they might be willing to volunteer, depending on what you do... Depending on what you do, though, let, let's say you did a farmer's market, you don't need any volunteers.
Could we also, uh, like, put something on the website, saying that, um, we're trying to determine interest in a community event, and, and just like you said, get input, but also have it on the, on the website, so people could see it. That I think would help John get more eyes on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. So, let's have a motion to table for now.
Motion to table, and then.
Second.
Counsel member Cornet?
Aye.
Counsel member Rob?
Aye.
Counsel member Crumona?
Aye.
Counsel member Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefur?
Aye.
Okay, getting towards the end here, um, oh, regarding the, and Kim, you might have already had this in your notes too, but, uh, regarding the future agenda items of recording public comment and discussion of potential, um, reconstitution of the planning commission, um, Kim, I believe you would like some input from the council, if we would prefer to have these discussions in a work session, or part of a regular meeting agenda, and if I'm understanding correctly, the main difference is, um, if we anticipate, what?
Sorry, what?
You were shaking your head.
No, the reason I, I was going to ask the council about having a work session prior to the next meeting, which is what we're, gosh, we're going to be made, we're going to say, um, for an hour prior to the meeting, is just because I think that's going to take more discussion, and quite honestly, the, the, the discussion we just had, that should have been in a work session as well. It shouldn't have been on the agenda, because it's just decide, or just discussing things now, it's not talking. Now, that being said, if you guys want to set up a work session, it's more informal. We can talk about public comment, uh, the planning commission, and/or, we can do it on the next agenda during a meeting, if you would like. We don't have much for our next agenda, so I, at this point, I can change.
If we do it during a work session, can we kind of, can we then put it on the agenda, or no? You would have, like, whatever we decide at the work session, we wouldn't get to, we would do a month to act on it, correct? So, we would act on it.
Months to act on it, yeah, there's no timing.
Correct. If we made a decision, we're like, okay, this is where we're at on the planning commission, we can't make a decision in May. We'd make, the earliest we'd have a decision is in June, when we vote on it, when it's on the agenda, correct?
If there is a decision, yes.
Okay, cool, just want to make sure on timing.
Because at this point, there's nothing on the table.
Correct.
Yes, but yes, it would, it could be on the next agenda.
Correct, okay. I mean, I think it makes sense to do a work session, those things are like meteor topics, and so then that way, we have enough time to discuss it, and, you know, we can get public comment if necessary later, and go from there.
And also, I think frees up staff time, right, because Kim, um, we won't need Jennifer, and Brad, and Nick, and, okay.
So, your next meeting is Tuesday, May 6th, and we could schedule, um, if you want, an hour. Forgot, we meet at 6:30.
Well, I think we'll need an hour for, we'll probably need an hour for each topic, or what, what do you think, or do it both in one?
I, I'm thinking a half hour for each.
Okay, okay.
So, that would be a 5:30 start.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, okay, 6.
So, I will get that posted. Thank you.
Okay, um.
I don't have any more updates.
Okay. I don't have anything more under new business, unfinished business, nothing. Discussion items, nothing from staff, um, city council reports, nothing. Looks up to the community calendar, would, uh, would like to read it?
I will just note, before you do the community calendar, because we only do it for the month, cleanup day is May 3rd, 9 till noon out here. And that is already posted on the website.
Yep. Um, I'll be here, of course, will anybody else be able to join me?
I got it on my calendar.
On my calendar.
All the contractors typically come out and help unload garbage from residents', um, cars, and pickups, and.
It's really a good opportunity to, aside from campaign season, it's a good opportunity to talk to as many residents as possible. Um, a lot of them are just concerned about dumping their trash, but there's, some of them will take the opportunity to share their feedback with you, so. Um, Benny, are you?
Nothing, nothing, no.
Okay. Alright, so.
Community calendar.
Community calendar. I think we should pick on the new guy.
Yeah, I think so too.
Are you, are you ready for this challenge?
I.
Read the community calendar?
Read the community calendar, I can do that.
Go for it.
Alright. Mata Mida Public School Board Meeting, Thursday, April 10th and April 24th, at the Mata Mida District Education Center at 7:00 PM. Stillwater Public Schools Board Meeting, Thursday, April 10th, Stillwater City Hall, 7:00 PM. And the Washington County Board of Commissioners Meeting Tuesdays, at the Government Center at 9:00 AM.
Move to adjourn.
No second.
Counsel member Cornet?
Aye.
Counsel member Rob?
Aye.
Counsel member Crumona?
Aye.
Counsel member Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Giefur?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.